...come to order. So, we'll start with public comments.
Bob Barth Lee, thanks for your consideration. With tire crumb temporarily gone, but no doubt not forgotten as the cheapest infill material, I want to share the following with you. Thursday, March 26, 2015, I phoned Amy Griffin, the University of Washington soccer coach, who has been doing the survey of soccer players who have developed cancers and who play on crumb rubber fields. I wish to find out if she knew of any scientific epidemiologic studies generated by her findings. She is receiving flack even from her university and is discontinuing her efforts. She hopes for a scientific epidemiologic study and understands Yale is interested and may have funding. A research scientist at the University of Washington is about to have discussions with the State Department of Health for further study. The state of California has a moratorium on tire crumb fields and is considering further study. Quite by coincidence, an hour after I spoke with her, she sent me the following email. Quote, "Hi Bob, thanks for getting in touch with me. Thought you'd like to see the email that was just sent in my direction. Looks like this thing is gaining some knowledgeable momentum. Hi Ms. Griffin. I am a physician in epidemiology for the state of California, the University of California-Berklee, and I was hoping that we could speak about the interesting group of cancer patients you have seen among soccer players. I've been asked by our state agency to consider a large epidemiologic study on the effects of artificial turf, and I think your experiences would be very helpful in the process. As you know, we have a large number of these fields in our state, and many people in California are quite concerned. Do you have any time during the next week to give me a call? Anytime you have would be greatly appreciated. Thanks." Craig Steinmaus, M.D., M.P.H., Public Health Medical Officer, Epidemiology Officer, Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, California Environmental Protection Agency. Unquote. She is confident of her latest figures of 81 soccer goalies with cancers, mostly non-Hodgins, lymphoma, and a few leukemias, all playing on crumb rubber fields. She is less confident about the exact ratios with non-goals. Most are from the northwest and northeast, including New Hampshire. While concerned about the figures she has gathered, she nonetheless hopes that further studies might prove the safety of the crumb, but feels until safety is positively established is irresponsible to install any more such fields. As an aside, again, I'll state, I support the track and artificial field, but not with tire crumb. I'm willing to donate more than we can afford to the project if tire crumb is excluded. Respectfully submitted." And your top is as anybody's.
Thank you, Bob. Other public comment?
Hi, my name's Sophie Webb, and I live in Durham. I've gone to the school district my whole life, and I just have a little bit to say about the track and the fields facilities. So, I'm here to speak out in support of the fields and facilities upgrade proposal and getting it back on the ballot, as well as the formulation of a committee of students, board members, and community members focused on seeing this proposal all the way through. So, I run cross-country and track, indoor and outdoor, and running has been a huge part of my high school career here at ORHS. Some of my strongest friendships have been forged through the pain and sweat of track and cross-country. I've run countless laps around those fields out there on estimated 800 loops and less than perfect 400s. Running on the track and cross-country teams has provided me with an outlet for the day-to-day stresses of being a student. I have formed leadership skills, as well as the crucial respect for working together as part of a team. I can't wait to see the day when kids can walk up the tower to their third-floor classes and look out the window to see a beautiful pristine track. I've always had immense pride in being able to tell people that I go to Oyster River. I love the community, the teachers, the students, and the general feel of the place. The only thing that has ever been missing is adequate fields in a track. The students who attend Oyster River are generally hard-working, devoted kids, and I believe that our student athletes deserve playable fields and a track. There's been countless times in cross-country especially where we've run over to UNH to see if we could get onto the track and ended up running loops around the field. Our cross-country teams and track teams are highly competitive within our division and the state, and with adequate facilities, there is no doubt that our programs would excel. These teams deserve a facility to call their own. I've never had a home track meet over my time at ORHS, and that's really unfortunate for me and everybody else. There's something about racing at home, playing at home, that can't be found anywhere else. In closing, I will just say, thank you for listening to me, and please consider supporting the fields and facilities upgrade, as well as the formulation of a committee focused on passing this proposal.
Thank you, Sophie.
Hello, I'm Michael Donovan, and I'm a sophomore at Oyster River High School. I'm here tonight to ask the school board to establish a committee to advance the facilities upgrades for next year on the town ballot. I've been lucky enough to play on the soccer team last year, and we made it all the way to the state finals. We were able to host two playoff games, and the games were a huge emotional help to the team. Fields, however, were unplayable due to a large amount of rain. It was very dangerous conditions and that I've ever played in my whole entire life with soccer. For years, I have played for Secus United, who has four very nice turf fields, and we have played outdoors all throughout the whole entire seasons. Our team right now is getting ready together and trying to get ready for next year and practicing in the gym in the mornings and lay at night. We are lucky to have the gym that we're using, and we're looking forward to having a good season next year and trying to make it to the state finals. I'm also on the Oyster River baseball team here at Oyster River High School. I've been working with the team, and we've been having a really tough time getting practices in at the gym. It's very tough to work with all the other sport teams, as lacrosse and girls lacrosse. We did have to snow blow off the left outfield of our baseball field, and right now it's still very muddy, and we were out there actually today, and it was very tough to play out in those conditions, and we still have a very big spot of ice all over right field. Right now, our baseball field is facing in the wrong direction. When you're up at bat, the sun is behind you, but for pitchers and fielders, it's very tough to see the ball after the batter's hit it because the sun is right in your eyes, and it's quite dangerous, and if you're not paying enough attention and that ball is hit hard enough, you won't see it coming. That's happened to me many times, and it's happened to most of my friends. Thank you for your time, and I was just hoping to ask you to please help us get those fields for next year.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ben Jeans. I live in Etana Lee, and I'm a board member of the Oyster River Youth Association, and I'm here to ask the school board to consider forming the committee to look at continuing and do the project for the fields. I want to reinforce ORYA's commitment to supporting the school district in their effort. I think it's, I think a lot of you know that we're sort of the feeder organization to the school. Our numbers continue to go up. We have probably close to 2,200 registrants a year, and I know that Todd and Cory have talked about that Oyster River has one of the highest participation rates of students in the state that participate in athletics, and I want to think that it has a lot to do with the proactive community we have, and all the parents that volunteer with ORYA, and then the good relationship that our organization has with the school. I can't say enough about working with Cory and actually the schools with doing the, using the facilities of the school and things like that, and vice versa. We have provided field space for some fields for some of the teams. So, here to let you know that ORYA is in support, and we'll do whatever we can to help. We did email blasts when the last go-around. Cory would send email announcements out. We would just send those out through our email system. So, we're here to let you know that we'll help any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Owen Kirdiak. I'm a sophomore here at Oyster River High School, and I moved here into the district after eighth grade, before freshman year, and one thing that I kind of associate with Oyster River School District is excellence, both academic and athletic, and I agree with what Michael and Sophie had to say about the project, and I think that we should have a good committee for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Other public comment?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Erica Heilman. I am the mother of three kids in the district. I have a child in high school, a child in middle school, and a child in elementary school. I am the mother of a young man who was just up here. We moved into the district precisely for its tradition of excellence academically and otherwise. I cannot say that all three of my children will be athletes and that they will use these facilities, but for me, that's sort of beside the point. I think that the facilities as they are are not adequate for the commitment to excellence that Oyster River has expressed, both in terms of having an athletic director as part of administration and really helping the student athletes invest in what they do. They put everything into it. It is a job for them that they manage against their academics, and, you know, to a certain degree, they deserve sort of adequate facilities for that. And also, I think the school itself will benefit across the board. A lot of students participate in sports, but even school spirit-wise, to be able to show up and be proud of where you're hosting people. Beyond that, I think the community will get use out of it as well. Lastly, I would just say, I think the election cycle this last year was tricky, and there were other pressures on the ballot that may have played a role in why this didn't pass, but I don't think that's necessarily a reason to abandon the project. I think that presented again and again, under different circumstances, that people will pass it. It was very close. Thank you.
Very much. Other public comment? Okay, thank you very much. Could I have a motion to approve the March 18, 2015 regular minutes? Al?
Make a motion to approve the March 18 regular minutes.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Are there any changes to those minutes? Sarah?
I have one tiny one. On page 10, where it says Maria Barth says something. That's something wonderful, I'm sure. The word committee needs to be added in after policy, and just because it didn't make sense to me without that word.
Board Ethics Policy, you want to add in committee right there?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, would like the Policy Committee.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there other changes? Hearing none, could we have a vote to approve the March 18 minutes with that one change? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Could I have a motion to approve the non-public minutes for that same day? Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 18 non-public minutes.
Moved by Al, seconded by Dan. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Oh, wait, I have one, sorry.
You've got to be quick.
There was, Todd Allen was also present at that, and I think he needs to be listed as an administrator, present.
Yeah, that's correct. Good catch.
Other than that, I'm good.
Well, that was a good catch. Appreciate that, Sarah. With that addition, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. Motion passes.
Dennis Harrington Mohermit, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a 30-year teacher who has not been teaching since 2002. What she has been doing is acting as the UNH supervisor for interns. And when I decided to come and do this, I thought that I would give you some background about what the framework is that helps to structure what happens with interns in both elementary schools. I can't speak for middle and high, but I suspect it's similar. Jan Roberts was a superb teacher in everything from grades two through grades five, in the old Oyster River Elementary School, at Mastway, and in the middle school. And in the last 12 years, she's helped to create 83 new teachers. And the framework that comes out of is the UNH program, which recently has received national award. I have the paperwork here, but I'm going to read it to you so that the public will hear this too, and this is from Dr. Tom Schramm, who is a respected national leader in public education. First, UNH Teacher Education Program was awarded national accreditation by both the Council for Accreditation of Education Preparation and the Teacher Education Accreditation Council this past year. More to the point, of over 1,700, excuse me, don't want to exaggerate, 1,700 teacher preparation programs that currently exist in the country, UNH is to date one of only nine that has received national accreditation under the new, more rigorous standards set by CAEP this past year. It should be noted that among the citation UNH received for this accreditation, CAEP highlighted the quality of our school/university partnerships, along with the year-long internship. And that is the piece that has, we've helped develop in the schools with the university, beginning in 1985 with Dr. Nodiosia and Dr. Mary Ellen Hahn, followed by Tom Schramm's leadership. It has been a gradual emergence from the time when I was in Somersworth, and when interns were assigned, I got a phone call September 1, which said something like, "I have six of them over here. Would you assign them to a classroom?" In addition, in building our national accreditation, the Teacher Education Program received a national award in February, the Frank B. Murray Award for Innovation and Excellence in Program Self-Study by the Council for Accreditation of the Education Preparation, C attached, and I've got handouts for all of you here. Then Tom goes on to Dennis, you should already have the handout provided in the recent meeting that we had that outlines the fact that the UNH Education Department has received a $1,000 gift from an anonymous donor to establish a literacy center at the university, which we will all benefit from, and there is an aspect of it that may even provide some resources for our children.
Dennis, it was $1 million.
Excuse me?
It was a $1 million gift.
One, what did I say?
$1,000.
$1,000. That would not have been much. $1 million. It's a really exciting proposition, and I want to recognize the university for its participation in helping us to help create the future educators in the area. Mohermit and Mastway are filled with many of these graduates, and Jan Roberts is responsible for many of them. And I'd like to end by recognizing her work over the last 12 years of steadily working with our teachers and with the interns to help create the future.
Thank you, Dennis. And Jan Roberts was my wife's co-operating teacher, so I can vouch for her.
That's cool.
Just have a couple of quick things. First of all, I was very proud of the three high school athletes that just spoke here. I think that they are good examples of the caliber of kids that we have in our athletic programs, and as was referenced, 73% of our kids are involved in inter-scholastic athletics. And on that note, 256 of those kids came out last Monday to start spring sports. Great. If you haven't had a chance to check out the Oyster River High School Facebook page, there's a great picture of Cory Parker snow blowing off the tennis courts to allow for the tennis team to practice, along with all of the kids out there with shovels picking away at the ice. Obviously, there's a lot of snow to be done there. But anyway, great commitment from our kids, and it's great to see that level of participation. Finally, I did just want to throw in one that's actually not a school-related thing, but it kind of is because it pays for scholarship that we've done for 12 years now. Todd's Trot 5K Road Race is this Saturday at 10 o'clock here at Oyster River High School. It's an event that's been going on, this is the 12th annual. It has fundraised the Todd Hoytley Memorial Scholarship Fund. To date, that scholarship has given away $35,000 to deserving Oyster River High School graduates to college, and so this is a great event. We're hoping that the spring weather will warm up, and suddenly, everybody will wake up on Saturday morning and say, "Gosh, I'd like to go run a race." But even if that doesn't happen, please come. It's a great event. So, thank you.
Thanks.
What time is it, Todd?
Registration starts at 8:30, but the actual gun goes off at 10:00 a.m.
Board announcements and accommodations? Al?
I don't remember if Todd brought this up, but, you know, seeing those students come up here, last month was the awards for the New Hampshire Scholar Athletes, and Oyster River was well represented. In fact, Sophie was one of them. And it's pretty amazing, because I can remember some of those kids, seeing them out at ORYA Little League, and, you know, trying to swim 25 meters with the otters, and now here they are, they've gone through high school, and they've been really successful, so it's a great thing to see.
Other board comments? Kenny?
It seems like it was quite a while ago, because I think we're on a cycle, but a few Friday nights ago, there was the one act play at the high school. I Don't Want to Talk About It was the play, and they were going on to compete. And boy, it's a play that I think everyone should really talk about. It was, I mean, the casting, the directing, the acting, everybody was superb, but just the theme of just that kind of existential kind of struggles that not only high school students have, but we all have, and that, the self-confidence kind of issues, and it just was an introduction to, an invitation to start dialogue, and I hope that play reappears, and I think everyone in school and everyone in the community should see it, because it's, although maybe it's set for the high school setting, it's, I don't think we ever get too old to have those kind of feelings. It's a wonderful play.
Uh huh. Thank you. Other comments? District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. I just wanted to give you an update on the Smarter Balanced Assessment and where we are in terms of that. The last time we spoke about Smarter Balance was in a formal presentation to all of you, and we really didn't have a lot of the specifics ironed out. We had a broad presentation with some broad information that we had with the facts that we had at the time. Since then, in early March, we sent an email out to all ORCSD families about the assessment with a frequently asked question sheet to provide information to parents. There's a lot of media attention with this new assessment, and I think it's hard for parents to discern between fact and otherwise, so we've been trying to help parents with what we know are the facts. We have continued to make ourselves available to any parents. We've met with some parents who have had some concerns, and I encourage parents to contact us. We'd be happy to meet with anyone who has any questions or concerns. On March 13, we had a professional development day. It was a training on how to proctor the new online assessment. It was about an hour and a half. We had all the staff present to allow them to be in a room together, to be able to hear each other's questions, and participate in an online training module. All proctors that are proctoring the Smarter Balanced Assessment, by the time we get to testing, will have gone through some type of training for assurances that they'll know how to deal with the interface, log on, be able to help students log on as well. We have created schedules at all the buildings, at each elementary, at the middle school, and at the junior year, grade level at the high school, that are very much toward students' best interests. So, when you look to hear that other districts have started assessing, and we have not, that was intentional. We were given a 12-week window to begin March 16, and we had to end June 6. And there were some chunks of time that were given, but in looking at the schedule that was going to begin assessing grades three and four, it would have started two weeks ago. We really felt that students weren't ready at that time in third and fourth grade to really be able to do a nice job and feel confident, and the same with ourselves, having enough time to ready ourselves for the assessment. Our first assessment will begin April 20, and that will be at the middle school. Since we had the professional development day, all teachers and staff that will be proctoring have received a login to their account. Catherine and her staff have uploaded student-specific supports and accommodations, so they're already preset into the system. We're encouraging support staff and special education teachers to go in and just double-check so the day of the assessment, we're just ready to go. We're not entering anything last minute. Teachers, right now, you may hear some parents or from parents that teacher, that some of the students are taking parts or pieces of the practice test, and that's very intentional. It's for us to expose the students to a new interface, make them familiar, lessen anxiety, to allow them just to see what tools will be accessible to them, not to take another assessment. It's really just an exposure, so that when it does come time, and April 20, they'll say, "Remember when you saw this? Oh, okay, I know how to use these tools." The practice test allows us to stop and start, to talk about something, to point things out, and we won't be able to do that in the real assessment. We have materials that we're compiling that are both common in nature across the district, as well as specific to the different schools and grades. The common materials are those that show teachers how to enter into the summative test. We've heard that by accident, other school districts have led their students through an entire practice test, only to find out that they have to take their students through an entire summative test. So, we're being very specific and very intentional about the directions on how to go about taking the summative, which is the final test. So, those directions are generalizable across the district. What's specific about the instructions we're putting together are the schedules that are different at each building, and at each grade level, there have been assigned classroom activities that lead into a performance task, and those will be very specific to the grade. And I think that's all I have to report. Any questions? Sarah?
One, just feedback, wanted you to know, my daughter feels very ready. She feels very ready. And are there going to be, with all the technology piece to it, are there any tech people that are available, extra tech people to be available in the buildings on the day of testing to handle some of those?
Right. During testing times, the IT staff have been asked to be in the buildings where the testing will occur. We are also looking at a schedule where we have multiple people in the room, so it's not one teacher by themselves in a room feeling like they're going it alone, so we're encouraging multiple staff members in the room just to help support one another in the event that anything goes awry. We have really reached out to the staff to say, if anything does happen, you know, unforeseen, a fire drill, the internet drops, or something like that, it's really not a big deal. All we'll have to do is close the test, they can restart the assessment. It all depends on the situation, so until that arises, instead of getting worked up at all the what-ifs, we're going with what we know and doing the best we can. So, that's the attitude that we're taking toward the assessment.
Kenny?
Just, I guess, a few things. One, I appreciate the way you did send out online to all parents that were informing them of the testing that was coming up, Smarter Balanced. I would really encourage- I would really encourage people who are watching with children, do the practice tests. And that way you could familiarize yourself with what your children will be doing. We're used to maybe kneecap and that kind of standard assessment. And really, the comparisons are going to be apples and oranges. And unless parents really familiarize themselves with the test, they really might not understand. I don't know if you call it rigor, but it's a difference. And so interpretation of results might help if you understand it. But a few questions.
Sure.
And I know it's a state mandate and we're following state mandate. How much time would you estimate preparation has taken out of classroom instruction? Let's say at elementary school and at middle school with, you know, taking these practice tests, talking about it or working a subject matter geared to the test rather than what that curriculum might have been? Do you have any sense of that?
At this point, some teachers have chosen to try to give a practice, a performance task, more of a, a writing situation. It is related to our standards, so it's related to the curriculum we're providing. There's a little more intentionality behind it because they're asked to create an argumentative essay or an explanatory piece of writing using different sources to cite, be able to cite sources. You know, my, my best guess is that I know they're spending a little bit of time on the practice test and some may have done a performance task with their students. But other than that, we haven't taken any time away, other than that, that I'm aware of, in preparation for the test. We've really stayed true to teaching the curriculum, working toward the state standards toward the end of the year and what students should know and be able to do and beyond that. But other than what's happened recently, we didn't really have the information either. It came out the very end of January, beginning of February. So then with February vacation and we have April vacation coming up, we really haven't had a lot of time to dedicate to taking away from already planned classroom.
Go back to your original point, Kenny, where you were encouraging parents to expose themselves to the practice exams. Each building's encouraging, encouraging our teaching staff to expose the students to the practice exams as well. So in terms of quantifying it, it would be difficult for us to do because we don't know which teachers are doing what at each building because it's more of an encouragement rather than a mandate. So.
Okay. And how, how much time out of the classroom do you think the testing itself will take?
So the, the only comparison I have is that the kneecap took about nine hours. The Smarter Balance is predicted to be seven and a half. So when we look at the comparison of what we're looking at between, that's the, what we're looking at right now, it's supposedly guessed at being about an hour and a half less than what we were used to with our kneecap. So that's what we're looking. We are, all the schedules, when you look across elementary level, middle school and high school, are really chunking the assessment in no more than an hour and a half to two hours tops a day. So it might go across a couple of days. But for instance, the performance task where they have to do a classroom activity, they then read multiple sources on a topic, take notes, and then they do a full write. We've chunked that out where they have a classroom discussion. That's a classroom activity. They then look, read the sources and take notes. That's one session. And then they come back another day and do the full write. So it's not happening, happening all in one day.
And will the, the challenge of the technology of having the computers available, does that add an additional burden? So, you know, the test is seven and a half hours, but not everyone can take it at the same time because of our limited technology.
Right.
Availability. Will that affect classroom time at all where some kids are taking a test and the others aren't taking the test because there's not a computer for them?
We've been encouraging staff. They've known that this has been coming for quite some time as far as our, the scheduling window. We've been encouraging staff to kind of plan accordingly, to not sign out a computer cart, knowing that the computer, the testing's going to be those three days. Or being mindful that if they wanted to do some type of work on the internet, they may have to do it in pairs and have to use their Promethean board. But the, the use of a cart won't be available to them.
It's probably the biggest impact is most likely the middle school, Kenny, because every single grade is taking, you know, the exam. And Jay has built a schedule with his staff that rotates the machines through as they're needed. So they definitely will be lost to classroom teachers at the middle school as we go through this testing cycle because of how many kids are taking the exam. But at the elementary, we should be okay. And at the high school, we should be okay because we have dedicated labs. And the elementary, where not every grade is taking them, the impact is less. So, you know, there's no question the impact at the middle school is going to be where you'll, where you'll see the most dramatic reallocation of resources and therefore they're not going to be available for social studies when Smarter Balance is going on.
And I, and I do, I realize it's, this is state. Another question just from reading and different districts are handling it different in different states. And I know in New York State, there's a real uproar where teacher evaluation is being very tied to the results on this testing. And where do we stand as a district now as far as? Are these results going to reflect on a particular classroom?
No.
On a grade or?
So what?
We have a professional evaluation committee going on that Carolyn and Todd, as administrators, have been sitting on. And the state of New Hampshire took a position that, which is a brilliant one compared to some other states like Connecticut and Florida, where the data component of a teacher evaluation is relatively small. It can't, can't be more than 20% for us. So no teacher will be dramatically impacted by the results of Smarter Balance. Won't even be marginally impacted by the results of Smarter Balance.
The state has given us local control to determine our 20%. So you could use several different types of data to make up that 20% we haven't been dictated, which has been great. It's allowed us as a, as a school district and also as a committee representing the teachers to determine what that will look like, what that makeup is.
And that report is going to be coming to you in May. So you'll see the work of that committee in May.
That's, I mean, it's wonderful to hear because here in other states where that test is
Absolutely.
50% and principals' role of evaluating or superintendents is. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
I guess before Carolyn leaves, I just really want to take the time to commend Carolyn and the building-level administrators on how they've handled the preparation for Smarter Balance. They've done an extraordinary job in a, in a moving target kind of framework. As Carolyn alluded to, you know, two months ago, we did a presentation missing lots and lots of pieces. And we're backfilling those pieces in now. Our teaching staff, our administrative staff, Carolyn and Catherine have done an extraordinary job getting us ready to take this exam. I really want to give time to commend them all.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, I, before the meeting, and I put it out as a public document, you may recall that, excuse me, I better pull this together or Alex is going to give me trouble. Before we voted in March, we, you, you had approved my going out and getting firm bid numbers on the field upgrade and the track. And as we were going through this, we decided that these numbers would be invaluable to us even after the fact. And I, I think they really did prove to be, you know, a significant piece of information that we can use as we hopefully develop around two of this effort. So had the Warren article passed and had crumb rubber been the base, the, the, the bid would have come in under $2 million. So the bond we were asking for was $2 million and it would have been sufficient based on what we knew at the time. So then we had a series of alternatives and then the alternatives, in many cases, were going to be fundraised. So for example, if we wanted outdoor lighting, that was not part of the $2 million bid. To do the outdoor lighting would have cost $335,028. And that's the commitment that Todd and For and the supporters of this work said we would fundraise. Bleachers, we want to have a significant bleacher presence so that we can enjoy the new facility. The bleachers would have cost us $158,314. That two would have been fundraised. Alternative three was my request of you and we did the bid to seek alternatives to crumb rubber. And if we did turf infill, which would be the least expensive alternative to crumb rubber, it would have been $157,130. So not outside the realm of, you know, possibility. With prices for alternatives ranging all the way up to $350,000. And then the alternative four would also have been fundraised or donated time. I could see teams and, and athletic supporters coming in and doing the wood frame dugouts or if we want masonry with wood roof dugouts. That would have been $71,769 to $94,239. So, you know, these are really good numbers for us to have. So for the first time going into a construction project, I'm sure Sarah wants to pat me on the back right now. We actually would have firm numbers. Now, they're firm for this spring and clearly, you know, we'll have to go back out in, you know, as we approach what our commitment is to this project in the coming year. But the good news is it really did play out just the way that we predicted it would play out in terms of cost. And, you know, depending what the board does a little bit later in the agenda, this is really great data for us to have to formulate an action plan around how we would go forward. So I'd be glad to answer any questions or?
Denise?
Just, is, so was there, this was just one bid? Were there other bids or?
No, remember how we work with a contractor, the, the contractor services, he seeks the bids?
Oh, okay.
And then he presents us with the best company to meet our needs.
Okay.
So he's, he does all of that work and then when we get the numbers, we know these are the best numbers that.
Got it.
Just as a small point of clarification, turf infill refers to natural grass. Is that correct? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, that's not natural. That is a barley-coated, Todd, I'm looking for help here. Barley-coated rubber solution. Is that one of those alternatives?
Turf infill?
Turf infill. Is that that barley-coated stuff?
I'm actually, I thought you were talking about Envirofil. I'm actually not familiar with that particular.
Well, so.
It's, it's an alternative. It's not crumb rubber.
Turf infill being sort of an umbrella term under which there are many other options?
Nope.
No?
It's a particular option.
That's a brand.
I see. Okay.
When you do, when you do an artificial turf field, you have like the, the artificial grass, as it were, that's like two and a half inches long. And then there's an infill that goes in there to create the cushion that holds the blades of grass up. And the crumb rubber is the, the product that's typically used to provide that. That's a, you know, it's about an inch of ground-up rubber that kind of used as like a, it's like a sand, if you will, that holds the grass up. So it's, it's like, like grass and it's cushiony. What we're talking about is infill, the different products that could be used in that part of it. And there's a whole bunch of different possibilities.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Great. Good, good information. I'm sorry, Sarah?
That $97,000, little paragraph. So that is, if I'm understanding how that's written. So that $97,000 is in the $1,009,000 bid up top, correct? And then if you wanted to peel that piece off, that's how much you could peel off?
That's exactly right. Yeah. Just so for the public, because they don't have this document. I asked the contractor how much it would cost us outside of the bid if we wanted to take this out of the bid to redirect the softball and baseball fields, which was part of the original project. And it's approximately $100,000 to take care of that. So again, you know, if it were an operating budget solution, it's very doable.
I just have one question because it's, you have it down like with the lighting. I assume when you, hopefully they gave us like what the bid is to do the bases and then you may have to run the conduit or whatever before you do the infill for the lighting. Do we have a separate?
That's all of that and the lighting?
That's, that's 300, that's what just the bases cost or is that all the entire lighting?
All the entire lighting.
Yeah. So I mean, I would assume that, you know, part of the project that we go forward, we're going to want to do the bases and the conduit.
Yes.
You can't dig everything up again.
Right, exactly.
So you should know that.
That's part of the base. That the base bid includes the concrete stanchions for the light poles and the, the, what's the, plastic piping underneath to run the wires? All that's part of the base. This is if you wanted to bring it right up and put the poles in.
I know, but I'm just saying if we're going to come up with, and again, I'm not going to get the detail. But we should know like if you're going to fundraise the rest of the lighting, part of the basic bid, no matter what we have, should be the base and the conduit. Because.
And it is, yeah.
And it is.
Yeah, the cement slab for the bleachers as well as the bases for all the lighting was part of the.
That's good.
And everything else is beyond that.
Yeah, I think it's saying you need to do this, you can't just do it and then add the lighting because then you're going to have to dig. So it's saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Business administrator? Nathan? Student Senate report?
Yeah. Well, we had Relay for Life Prom Fashion Show last Friday and they raised $2,221, which was 500 more than they raised last year. It was a really good turnout and it was a really good show. But right now, it's, the end of the quarter is rapidly approaching. So the Senate hasn't started any new projects yet. We're still working on our open campus report, proposal. And as Mr. Allen mentioned, all the spring sports have begin, begun and everyone's excited for the season to what the season will bring.
Hope you get some clear fields.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, so we have the discussion items. So you have, in your packet, you have the school board committee assignments with the exception of the advisory budget committee and the communications committee, which I thought should be discussed separately because there's some questions about both of them. So I'm wondering if I could have a motion to approve the proposed committee assignments from the packet?
I'll motion to approve the committee assignments as described in this document.
Okay. Moved by Denise, seconded by Al?
Question?
Yeah.
I deliberately did not sign up for the wellness committee because they meet at the same time as the policy committee.
Okay.
And Kenny has the same problem. Unless, well, Carolyn left, but that's one.
I'll put myself down for that. Okay? That's all that? Okay?
So Todd, you're going to do wellness?
Wellness, yeah. Okay, so who made, Denise, you made the motion. Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes, that's fine.
Who seconded? Al, friendly amendment?
Indeed.
Okay. With that change, are there any other changes? Okay. Could you have a mo, could you have a vote to approve the committee assignments? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor? Okay. We have in the packet a recommendation to form a school board ad hoc committee that has the.
Are we going to discuss the communication committee?
That's the third. I'm following the order, I'm following the order that we have here.
Oh, okay.
Is that right? I mean, it might have been logical to have it the other way around, but I think I'll just. Okay? So I'm wondering if I could have a motion to establish this committee is outlined in this memo?
Could I just?
Sure.
When would it be good to talk about composition after the motion is made?
Yeah, once the motion's done.
Okay.
Okay. Usually you're advised to talk about things within a motion, so.
Perfect.
Okay?
Okay.
Denise?
So I'll motion to establish a school board ad hoc committee for the purpose of developing a proposal for the athletic fields.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Kenny.
And that's all in the motion or is this whole? Proposal in the motion?
It's the entire proposal, is that correct?
Well. Oh, as presented here without any, well.
Or do you think?
I'll motion to accept and then we can always make modifications to it. So I'll motion as presented.
Okay. Okay. It's moved by Denise. Second, and who was the second?
I was.
Kenny? Okay, discussion? Maria?
I have a hard time with the as presented because I feel I don't know enough.
I have a hard time with the as presented because I feel I don't know enough. I'm going to watch the web seminar next week and I think we have to have an approach that's different from what we have had. And they might have good ideas, so the composition might not be what we want. We might want a real techie person on there because communication with the community might be a tech, you know, social media tech kind of thing that I don't understand anything about. So I would move to amend to take out the structure for now and approve the committee as a concept until the next meeting.
So you're making, you're, you're making an amendment to her motion?
Yes.
Okay. And could you state, state what your amendment is one more time?
To take, to approve the committee as a concept without any list of...
Without any details about?
Right.
Okay, so no details about the composition or about the function of the committee?
Right.
Okay, that's the most...
You're not approving the charge either? Not at the bottom?
Let me see. Okay. It doesn't work. Do this for...
Maria.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, the, with the charge, it's fine.
I'm sorry, so the motion is to approve the...
Committee.
Committee and to approve the charge, but to withhold, but not to approve the, but to, to take, to take the composition of the committee out of the motion?
Right.
Okay, that's her amendment. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded.
I have, oh, so I want to...
Denise?
Well, Kenny can go.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I would vote against that amendment. I think that we can put together a committee such as this. There is flexibility when we're talking about adding representatives from the town. I think many people on this will have that tech ability and there's nothing that precludes us from being able to add another member to the committee as we're going forward if we decide that there's an additional need. But the composition as listed, I think that's really crucial that we have people from all of that. And so I'd rather just get the ball rolling and approve this. And I actually have a suggestion of what I'd want to add to start with to this, but I would vote against the amendment for that reason.
Denise?
I agree with Kenny. I think that I appreciate what Maria is saying about having technological know-how, but I believe that we can...
Just one.
Okay, well, I believe that we can incorporate that within the representation from the different towns would be my guess, is that people that might be interested in serving on this committee, maybe those, you know, folks that have that sort of background. I guess the other concern that I have is I wouldn't want it to get too large because, you know, when a committee gets too large, it's, it's hard to accomplish, you know, the task at hand. So that's just my thoughts about that.
Okay. Denise, Al?
I, I'm, I can't remember for the life of me what that word thing is. What is this again? Can you explain?
It's how to engage the community to successfully pass a bond.
Looks like a really good one.
And it's run by a superintendent from a town that's tried it for 17 years and was finally successful. I'd like to know how he did it before I want to tie us down to whatever, so.
One, when is that again?
That's next Wednesday at 2:00.
Okay, so it's before the next meeting?
Yes.
Two, what, it's like my constant question, what was the thinking that went behind this configuration?
To make sure that we touched base with all the stakeholders, you know, town representation doesn't necessarily mean elected leadership. It could be a person from the town who's particularly interested in this fact. It probably is unlikely that we would get elected select people or counselors to participate. One of the things that I've learned from my experiences with our three towns is these guys are wicked busy and, you know, it's all well and good that we reach out to them and I think they truly appreciate the fact we reach out to them, but they generally will come back and say, Jim, would you accept somebody else rather than us? And so it's worked out extremely well. You know, obviously a board member on a committee like this is important for updating the board itself. Todd and Cory are essential to this effort, getting the student voice. The last time that we did this, the students came on late in the process and you can see tonight they're on the front side in the public comment. So it struck me that we really wanted to have a strong student voice. We heard tonight from ORYA again, as we were going through this process, you know, we wanted to give them, you know, a much stronger presence than they had. And, and as was said during public comment, a group of people who are totally committed to our, to recreation for our, for our children in the three towns, but who also have an incredibly strong relationship with the school community. So that was why I reached, I, I suggested that. And so I talked about the towns and then, of course, the Friends of Oyster River, who have been trying to do this for 18 years. So that, that made tremendous sense to me. And then, you know, as we do so often, as Tom has asked me so often, you know, we have teachers who are working on committees, we ask them to be now part of the presentation. It made sense to me that we would have a coach on the committee for that same reason. So it may not be an exhaustive group, but that was the mindset I had. I ran it by Todd and Cory. I ran it by Tom to see if they were, you know, my thinking was someplace in the right, white ballpark. Everybody thought it was. The coach came on as a result of, I think Cory's input. You know, I hear what Maria is saying. Nothing stops us from, you know, once we go through this webinar, because I'm gonna do the webinar too, because it looks awesome, and I think Kenny's gonna do it now as, what he became aware of it, that we can co-opt the membership, having people do two roles or if we have to come back and say, geez, we didn't think about this, we need to have somebody who represents this group, then we can come back and do that. So it was thoughtful, doesn't mean it's always 100% right, but that was the mindset behind it. Al?
The first thing, what really strikes me when I'm looking at the charge, what you want to do, it's like, this one's gonna require, and of course you covered it by doing Lee, Durham and Madbury, so I'm gonna go out on a limb and say we're gonna get some university people. But, I mean, I, I recognize we're putting people from sustainability, but I actually want some people with a serious science background, particularly in material science and geology. It's like, I mean, we're talking about drainage, we're talking about materials you're putting in, that's a really specific skill set. And it's great to have somebody that, you know, representative that, you know, may know some things, but I'd like to have somebody with some expertise.
And I think that you capture that through the representations from the towns.
So I think that's...
Universities peppered all through, through three towns, so I think we'll capture that. But I think that's actually part of what Maria is suggesting is, you know, we go through this process, as you just did, Al, and you started articulating off a specific, specific skill set. When we go through the webinar, we may find, you know, somebody who has a particular skill set and not technology, maybe it's finance or maybe it's communication techniques that we haven't tried yet, that kind of thing. So I, I'm looking forward to this webinar as well.
I just have one more thing too. It's like, there's nothing, in my mind, it, first of all, it's gonna take you a while, even if you put this out, to get the volunteers, to sift through the volunteers. So I don't really see the harm of saying, this is what we're looking for initially. You can do the webinar, you may find different skill sets of like what you want from Lee and then from that, the webinar may kind of have you come up with a criteria of who you really want as like the, you know, ORYA person and that. So I, I don't, I think that it's better to put the list out there and start to get some names pouring in.
And I also would add to that, Al, that I see this as a steering committee. I mean, Todd has had, I mean, if he, like after the vote, his conference room was chock a box full of people who wouldn't necessarily fit all of the criteria we have in this group. So we're not saying that those people that Todd has engaged and Cory has engaged, Mrs. Sullivan's sitting right there in the audience, you know, the, these people are still gonna want to be engaged. So this is more of kind of an executive committee so that we can monitor and, and gather the input and make sure that we're reaching the community. But, you know, they had zillions of people who were hands-on during this process and so we don't want to, this isn't to exclude them, it's more along the lines of having an executive group who's taking charge of how we're doing the work.
And things will be delegated accordingly.
And then things will be delegated, absolutely, because this group wouldn't do all of the work. I mean, Todd exhausted himself to the point where he was losing color by the time it was first handed, so. We're trying to make sure we diversify the workload so, you know, our administrators, Todd and Cory in particular, don't exhaust themselves to the point they did this time.
I'm just worried that too much focus will be on the supporters. I think we need to engage those that voted against this. We need to have the conservation commissions, the tree huggers, the tax cappers, all engaged in finding a solution to make this happen in a safe, an environmental, non-toxic way. Barrett Christina last night kept saying, as long as we keep our vision statement and mission statement in mind, we're doing good. So I took them out and read them and it had a lot, well, not a lot, but some about non-toxic, safe environment.
Dan, you have a spoken?
Yeah, so I, I wholeheartedly agree, Maria, with your points about wanting, as Dr. Morse has said, everyone inside the tent on important issues like this. With that said, I feel like, and I'm, I, I'm open to correction, but I feel like I don't see anything here that would prohibit us from accomplishing that. And knowing that we do have the ability to make changes as we learn more, I guess my concern is that there is momentum now, as we talked about last time. And if we were to table this for a week, maybe that wouldn't be the worst thing, but clearly there's a lot of energy, as we heard earlier, and I'd, I'd hope we would capture that and, and make a decision. So that would be my take.
Sarah, did you have?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I absolutely agree with, with the bring in the non-supporters as well, because that's gonna be the people that we have to find a way to convince. Not convince, but I mean, come up with, with something that works. So, and I also agree, I don't see anything in this list that precludes us from doing that. And so I guess that's what I'm gonna say, I will support this because I think getting the ball rolling is the way to go. And I think that in two weeks, it sounds like there's a lot of flexibility and because this is a school board committee, it's gonna be, these are public meetings that are gonna have to be posted, so everyone can go and I hope they do.
Kenny?
Just two things. One, the last statement in the charge says to spearhead the effort toward a successful March 2016 vote. I think included in that is reaching out to everybody and trying to get the vote. And then I guess, just with what you said, you support this, I guess we need to vote on the amendment before we vote on this.
So what's on the table now is an amendment to approve this proposal with the exception of the composition of the committee. Am I correct on that?
Or, or structure.
What?
Composition or structure. That wasn't her.
I think she was saying composition.
I think, I think that the intent was the composition, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, are you ready to vote on, on that amendment?
Just to clarify it in my mind, so if you vote for your amendment, you're excluding the comp, the people on it, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, are we all clear? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One in favor? All opposed, please raise your hand. The amendment fails. We're back, because we had an original amendment, original motion to approve the entire proposal, okay? So that's back on the table. Okay? Al?
So I'm not trying to belabor, but, but again, I, what your point was is that's, in my mind, what this whole committee is about. You don't form a committee to not listen to what you did wrong. That's, you form the committee to look at, and as I look down at what the charges are, you're trying to look at all the aspects. What could we have done different to improve our project, whether it's environmentally, cost, you know, I mean, so I think they did a pretty good, you know, reaching out to the public. So I think this is hitting most of the areas in my mind that I thought were weaknesses in our proposal. So it's like, you have, I mean, you don't want to repeat your mistakes, so you really want to tear apart what we did and look at all aspects of it completely, so that when we come forward and if we are gonna spearhead for March 2016, it's a really good proposal. So that, I think it's good.
Other discussion? Kenny, I'm sorry.
And I, I think the listing of participants is very thoughtful, very complete. The only thing that I might add and wonder is probably all three towns have parks and recreation type committees. And this is really a, you know, where it's not just a high school project, it's a community. So, and maybe it will come when we fill out the details, but just something to keep in mind that maybe people are going to be wearing, you know, playing different, two different roles, three different roles in their membership, but that might be an important constituency to, to have involved, just as we have ORYA involved.
Isn't ORYA all three towns by definition?
Yes.
But it's youth. So the difference between youth and the parks and recreation, those parks and recreation are doing all ages. And so there's a lot of senior programs, middle age programs and all that we anticipate as being users as well.
Yeah. But you're now making that as an amendment?
I, I could, I would swi...
I think, my own sense is this is quite a big committee as it is. This is, this is, I think to manage a committee and get this big a committee together, when I first saw the numbers, I thought, this is pretty big as it is.
Yeah.
And to add, to add to this, I don't think would be wise right now.
I agree with you.
So are you ready to vote on this?
Mr. Chairman, I will abstain for lack of more information and knowledge.
Okay. Okay. So, ready, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, student rep in favor, and Maria, you're abstaining.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion passes, so you have authorization to form the committee?
Great, thank you.
We have a letter from the advisory budget committee chair, Wayne Burton, recommending that that committee be ended. It's done great service, people worked very hard on it, but I know we've had difficulty filling that committee, so I'm wondering if we could have a motion to, I'm not sure what the, terminate, dissolve?
Dissolve.
Dissolve that, the advisory budget committee. Kenny?
I'd like to make that a motion, make that motion that we dissolve the ABC advisory budget committee, and then I just wanted to speak to it if there's a second.
Okay. Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al, go ahead.
I think that we're at this place because of the wonderful work that Sue Caswell and Dr. Morse have done. And I think that that committee came about when budgets were not as transparent and there wasn't the overwhelming support or, or trust in the community. And I think the process has become so understandable to the community and reasonable, and I think that's why we're at this point, we're, we're trying to vote on this.
Thank you.
Al?
Yes, I, I think when people think about the ABC, they tend to think that it was just strictly looking at the numbers on the budget and that, which they did, it was kind of painful, but, but, but it was more than that. It was actually suggestions about, and I think that's what's kind of lost, it was suggestions about how to improve the process of how we did a budget. And so, you know, there's, there comes a point after you make all your suggestions that you're kind of, you're out of suggestions. And I think that's, they kind of exhausted that. So in terms of like the accountability for the budget, I think that really that fell back on us and that's really our budgetary goal. What we do as a budget goal is really setting the limit to what we're doing. What we do as a budget goal is really setting the limit to what we're doing. So, that's really on us and not on a committee.
May I?
Sure.
So, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with ABC for the three years I've been superintendent, and I have to say that they work with some pretty extraordinarily committed people. You know, you go talk about the ideas, many of the ideas they put on the table, we implemented. You know, we talked about this building and its efficiency, we reached out and did the middle school and the elementaries as well. We looked at ways of reusing resources instead of just buying more bodies, how could we reconfigure how we do our work. You know, it was a group of really dedicated, hard-working people who, even though the committee dissolved because we were so responsive, that I think that in the end, we did exhaust the list of really good ideas they had, they were genuinely committed to this district, and I really want to say thank you to everybody who served over the time that this committee has existed.
Other comments? Okay, the motion is to dissolve the Advisory Budget Committee with thanks for all their service. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep abstains. Okay. I didn't staff the Communications Committee, there are some questions about that. Dr. Morse suggested possibly that committee could work more on an ad hoc basis, and I've given some thought to that, you know, being called in for certain issues. My recommendation on that is that this is an important committee, this is important work that we need to do. Communications, and by every, in every kind of like evaluation of a board, communications to the community is important. And I think we have real important issues coming forward, in terms of kindergarten, in terms of communication with testing, you know, some big, big issues that need to be communicated to the, to the, to the community. So, I would favor continuing this, this committee, and I think we've had three people who've served on it before, I don't know if they'd be willing to continue to serve on that. So, my suggestion would be to move forward with that committee. I think we would need a, we need a charge. I don't have the charges for any of the committee today, but I'll have those, you know, have those ready to, because we're supposed to approve written charges to all the committee by policy. But I think to go forward with the appointment of three people for this committee, it seems to me that, you know, it's, it's a part of what a board does, and not to have a committee that's committed to this would be a step backward for us. That's, that's my view. And rather than do it as an ad hoc basis, to do it kind of proactive, like look forward to what we need to do, and then work with Dr. Morse to, and then the administrative team to really communicate. My own sense is like, sometimes we think things are really out there, you know, because we've been talking about it for so long, and then to find out, people talk about, what's this about the fields, you know, it's like, you know, it's not, it's not out there. So, I think we really have to work at this. So, I don't know, I can't make a motion, but I'm wondering if somebody would move.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue with the Communications Committee.
And to, then we have to-
And to establish a charge, right? Or to, or to nominate the individuals?
I think to nominate the individuals, because that's, if we could-
Yep.
Okay, so, there'll be Kenny, who's been on, who's on it?
Kenny, Sarah, and, all right, and to have Sarah, Kenny, and Al to continue on that committee.
Okay. Moved by-
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Seconded by Kenny. Okay. Okay, Maria?
I would like to amend that to whatever you said, and that it will follow the policy of BBAA. That it is the committee of the whole.
Al?
So, I, you know, I, you've mentioned this, and I-
Is there a second?
There was a second.
Oh, is Maria amending?
This is an amendment.
Can you repeat that again?
We got a second to discuss.
All right.
Maria, can you repeat that again?
That this committee will follow the policy of BBAA.
But by definition, don't you have to follow the policy? So, why would you make a motion to follow-
Because we haven't. We haven't. And I, I've read through the minutes of this year, you reported we're developing a reply to Foster's.
Not we.
But that reply never came to this board, you're-
Can I? Okay, so, I have given quite a bit of thought of this, and I went back through, I guess you have to look at what our charge is, because the charge is what the board has given the authority of this-
I have not found this charge.
He's, he's talking.
So, I mean, when you look at it, and what we really were was advisory, we're advisory to the superintendent, we worked with the superintendent, and our real task wasn't informational. If you look at it, our task is to find the most effective ways to communicate with the public. So, if you go back and look at our minutes, really, the first meeting we spent, it was like, how do we more effectively communicate internally and externally, which follows along with our charge? We had two other meetings, which was like, we're supposed to do public community interest things, which was the athletic warrant free. What do we do in warrant article three? How do you more effective, we didn't develop any information, we said, how do you more effectively get that information out to the public? Whether it be flyers, Foster's, or any other way, you know, that we could effectively get the information out to a broader thing. The thing that you've alluded to, again, was some, an article that went into Foster said, we're going to fire a bunch of staff, which becomes a community concern. We said to the superintendent, do you think we should respond to this? We advised the superintendent, which is our charge, should we respond to this? And it was not the Communications Committee that responded to him, it was the superintendent, which is his right and his obligation. And then the last thing we did was we addressed, controversially enough, the presentation of the warrant articles, which is, again, how do we effectively communicate those warrant articles to the public? So, I mean, I've heard you say that we're not following policy, but actually, we've been really diligent about following what our charge really was. We never really, if we developed information, said, hey, you know what, we want to talk about the science behind crumb rubber or something else, or if, then maybe, yeah, we would have come to the back of the board, this is what we want to put out as a presentation. We never did any of that. All we did was follow our charge, which is, how do you effectively get the information out to the broadest thing? And if you look at it, what strikes me is we only really met four times, and it's kind of similar to the ABC. There's only so many times you can talk about how can you effectively get information out before you kind of exhaust the ways to do it. So, I think the charge needs to be redeveloped, what, and focused. Let's pick specific topics we want to talk about and work through those. And I think that's, that's what needs to be done. I mean, my suggestion would be, if you approve this committee, have them meet next week, develop a new charge, bring it forward to the 15th, and let the board look it over.
Sounds good to me. Maria?
I have looked through the minutes for this year, and find nothing about the charge. So, I don't know where that charge came from, and I don't know how that charge fits with that policy. This is a policy that we adopted. David Taylor, who's here, proposed it to us as part of the settlement, so I'm big on following this. And the policy itself says, you know, the committee will come back here to have us approve, and if you want to, you know, advise the superintendent, I can see it becomes cumbersome for you to come back, and we advise him in this way. But that's how the policy would carry out, and, you know, I-
I'd like to say something. Finish up, sorry.
You know, I think that the superintendent has every right to form his advisory committee on communication, and he picks the people, and he has one board member. But for three board members to advise whatever, without coming back and say, we as a board want him to understand whatever, you know, so if he wants his administrative team as advisors, or, you know, the English department who knows how to write, or whatever, and one board member that can come back and tell us what's going on. But to have a subcommittee that we never quite understand, because you said you didn't do what the minutes says, which is to-
I never said that.
It's in the minutes, and you didn't-
I said, we did what the minutes said.
Huh?
I said, we, you're saying I, we didn't do what the minutes said. I'm saying, we did do what the-
Right. Well, you said that we, which means the subcommittee, are formulating a response to Foster's. The minutes say that the committee was looking to make sure the information on the crumb field was correct and getting it out to as many people as possible.
It's not in the minutes.
Huh?
It's not in the minutes.
Okay, I'll look it up.
Did anyone else say something?
Well, go ahead.
Time you wanted to talk. It would seem to me that if we, it's our, it's our determination what we would want this committee to do. And if, if the policy does not fit that, we change the policy. You know, we should determine what we want that committee to do. And, and it seems to be reasonable to have three members from the board to work with the superintendent, and maybe, Dr. Morse, if you want to say how useful that is to you, does it help you to have that? Otherwise, it just, it just means it's all coming back to us, and we're, you know, we would, we would think it'd be really time-consuming if we would have to go through all the details of communications. It seems to me to be efficient to have a committee. And if that doesn't fit policy, I mean, it's, we've had it for two years, and it hasn't been a problem, but, but if that doesn't fit policy, change the policy so we can do what we should do.
So, when we look at policy, it's possible that we look at policy and we see it two different ways. I mean, we could see it seven different ways, there's seven elected people here, plus the superintendent, so eight, eight different ways. The idea behind the subcommittee is that policy, that language, is that the subcommittee is not a board unto itself, it's accountable to the larger body. So, when a committee of the board says, what do you think of this article as written in Foster, and, you know, we all agreed that it was not accurate at all, and they say to me, do you think you should write a response? I said, yeah, probably, and I wrote one, and, but it wasn't, that committee wasn't taking an actionable item that the committee of seven should, should bless. I mean, it was my job to respond to that particular editorial. In the conversation with the Communications Committee, they asked what I thought of that, and I said, yeah, it's a pretty horrific interpretation of what I said and what I wrote, actually, in the, in the Durham communication. So, you know, I do believe absolutely in Maria's interpretation of the policy as it says, a subcommittee of the board must bring actionable, I see it as actionable items to the full body. I think that language might be the way I see the policy, but for me to sit with a, a subcommittee of the board, a body of people that do not represent a quorum, and seek their advice, I don't think that's what that policy was intending. But if that committee said, Jim, you do X, Y, and Z, then I would say, well, we need to bring that to the committee of seven, because, the committee of the whole, because you're asking me to do something, and you don't have the authority to direct me to do it. So, I, I think that's what it was intended to be, that you wouldn't have any committee of three acting as if they were the committee of seven. And, you know, in terms of the Communications Committee, on those times where I've used them, I've used them, I would say, as critical friends. So, critical friends to me means, I've written something, I've shared it with the A-team, I've usually shared it with Sue, and Carolyn, and Wendy, and the crew, and I said, this is what I think we, this should say, and then I bring it to the Communications Committee and say, you know, it's critical friends, does this read well? Is this PowerPoint put together in a way that, you know, I'm getting my point across? That's how I've used the Communications Committee. And yes, I absolutely find that valuable. I mean, Todd and Jay have a perspective, but that's, to me, that's inside baseball, that's my team. And then, the elected body, you know, through the Communications Committee gives me another perspective, because, you know, as Dan alluded to in his presentation as he introduced himself, you know, I represent the public. And so, there's a public perspective that, as much as I appreciate Todd's perspective or Sue's perspective, you know, we're trapped inside a little house called Oyster River, and sometimes I need to break past the house called Oyster River and get into the hearts and minds of the people. The only way I can do that effectively is through you. You represent the people. So, if I've written something and it doesn't ring with the power that you want it to ring with, then Sarah will say, Jim, did you think about this? Or, you know, Denise, or whoever's on Communications, Al will say, you know, I know what you're trying to say here, but it's not, they're critical friends, you have to trust. And you have to trust that their critique isn't to be mean-spirited, it's to help you be more productive, more effective, more in line with what the board's goals are, or what we're trying to communicate with the public. So, when I was talking to Tom, I was thinking maybe, you know, I was playing with the idea of ad hoc, only because I was thinking, ad hoc, let's focus in on kindergarten, you know, ad hoc, let's focus in on, you know, the open campus, or ad hoc on, you know, if there's an issue that's driving our agenda, we know that the public's going to want to know more about it. What are the most effective ways, and, and not just, as Al said, there's a litany of ways, tried and true, but it's not just about how you would do it, but what you're saying and what you're communicating. And so, that's how I've used the committee, and I actually love that. I love being able to put a semi-finished product, where my heart and soul isn't on the table, where it's right close to where I think it needs to be, and have the group come in and say, you know, move slide 12 to slide 3, it goes better there, or you missed this piece, and you really need to bring it in. That's what I've used them for. So, they haven't been making decisions in absentia of the body, they've been helping me formulate mindset, not policy, not direction, just helping me communicate better, I think.
Kenny?
I appreciate that explanation, and I think it's been very rewarding to try to offer that support and feedback. And to me, I think what defined it, really, maybe if we're trying to really look at an example, is last night, the presenter gave to us, if the letter that would have come forth was signed the school board, or was signed the three in the committee and Dr. Morse, that, to me, would have crossed the line, because we shouldn't be speaking for the board. Dr. Morse was speaking for Oyster River School District in his capacity as superintendent, and we, we, there was something that came up, and we needed a response, and we just helped to, you know, brainstorm how that should happen. I mean, I would like the committee to have a more defined charge, and I actually think we should have a regular meeting date each month, so we're, we're proactive, not retroactive. And, and maybe it's different, but I'd just throw this out for thought, it's, so, you have a committee that you're involved with, 68 Hours of Hunger, it's not a subcommittee of the board, but it meets with the same sorts of public notice and all. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect you to come for board approval for the actions that you're doing as your committee. So, you send out a letter to the community, to House's soliciting donations for that project. To me, that's the umbrella of what you're doing. I wouldn't think that you needed to come to us and say, 68 Hours of Hunger wants to send out a letter to the community, does the board approve it? That, that's micromanaging your, your committee. And I think if we're within the charge of our policy, of communications, whichever, I think it's that same thing, you don't want to get into the dirt with every committee, as long as they're not acting as the board, they're, and the committee can't act as the board. So, I think that's where you draw the line.
Maria?
Maria?
Maybe the problem is in the presentations, because here I have February 11th. Al Holland reported that you met. They are trying to get out the accurate information out on the athletic field project to as many people as possible. That's... Sounds like an action. It doesn't sound like, you know, we talked about it, and whoever is going to do it, and it should have been worded differently, just like the letter to "We are going to formulate a response." Ask the board member who's not privy to the three of you. My ears perk up. What is the accurate information that you are agreeing to? Does that include my take on the athletic field, or is that just...
I think... I think that was clarified in a subsequent...
It was clarified after three conversations with you. I finally got it clarified, which, you know, makes me feel like something is happening that I don't know about, and I should know, just to say, but, you know, everybody should.
We have a motion on the table.
Yeah. I was actually gonna... I would like to move the motion.
Okay.
But we have an amendment first. We have to vote on the amendment first.
You're moving the amendment?
I'll move the amendment, then.
Okay.
Can't we just rehash the amendment?
What is the amendment?
Maria Bach moved to amend the motion that this committee will follow the policy of BBAA seconded by Sarah Farwell. And Denise, you moved the amendment, right?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just got it.
I'm trying to move, so we can do a vote.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to follow the policy? Written policy?
I feel that that puts... It puts... You can't vote against it, because of course you're going to follow the policy, but it's like, why don't we have that for every single thing we do, then? Let's tag that every single action. We should tag that.
Yeah, I would have to say, "Okay, when you're going to have a policy committee, then you have... I vote that you do. You follow the policy."
Yeah, I think that's...
I would rule that out of order, because I think following a policy is what we do.
Implicit in...
Okay. That ruling could be challenged, but I would rule that out of order. Okay?
So, how do I put that?
I ruled it out of order. If somebody wants to challenge that, to have a motion that we follow a policy, I think is out of order, because that's what we do.
It's to the chair.
Okay? Is that appealed? Okay, then we're back to Denise's motion, which is to approve the...
To continue with the Communications Committee and to nominate that Kenny Rotner, Sarah Farwell, and Al Holland continue on with this committee, seconded by Kenny Rotner.
Okay.
Okay, so for clarity, just in terms of what just happened. Tom, you ruled the amended motion out of order?
Right, and it was not challenged.
Maria did not challenge that?
Okay.
Is that true?
That's true.
Okay, all right, all right. Just want to make sure that that's captured.
Okay, okay. So, are we ready to vote on the motion? Further discussion? Okay?
I'm sorry, can I hear that motion one more time? My brain's going like six ways.
Denise, they moved to continue with the Communications Committee and to nominate that Kenny Rotner, Sarah Farwell, and Al Holland continue on with this committee, seconded by Kenny Rotner.
Okay, ready to vote? Maria?
I guess I'd move to reschedule this for next meeting, pending a charge.
Okay.
But who's gonna ask? No.
Okay.
I have a question.
So, you're moving it amend... You're moving to table?
No.
To postpone?
Postpone.
Is there a second? Hearing done? Okay. So, that's not second, and so we go on to the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Six in favor, all those opposed? Want to oppose? Motion carries. Okay? So, I'm sorry.
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay, okay. So, you've approved the members of the committee, including the Communications Committee, right? So, we have a motion to approve four proposed administrator contracts. Kenny?
I move to accept the administrator contracts as proposed. It's 2015-2016 salary, elementary principal, assistant principal at the high school, assistant special ed director, and transportation director.
Okay, moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. Discussion? Denise?
Just a question to kind of clarify how the numbers were developed, because I know that we've generally been trying to set, move them up so that they're sort of towards the higher end, but here it's a little different, so maybe just some rationale behind it.
Sue and I had the conversation about either the goal of bringing our administrators into the top 25 percent. These three of those do not yet reach that criteria, but we also felt strongly that the board and ORAA would be renegotiating for '16-'17, and felt that the negotiating team would then adjust whatever salaries were left, not reaching that threshold. So, there's 2% increases, like everybody else, except for Dennis, and his is one, not on quality reasons, but because if Dennis got a 2% increase, he would actually get more money than Jay Richard, who has greater responsibility. And so, you may recall, last year, we actually didn't let Dennis' salary move at all, because of his longevity, his salary is higher than what you would normally see for an elementary principal. Dennis and I have talked about it. There's no hard feelings there. He understands it completely. So, the tough part about Dennis is because of his longevity, his salary is such that it's potentially could be higher than administrators with greater responsibility. He gets that, and so, that's why that salary was the level it's at. So, is that...
Yes, thank you.
Other questions about these? So, I'm sorry, I've lost track. We had a motion to... Has this been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Denise, right?
Okay, okay. Further discussion?
Who's the second?
Al.
Al. Kenny and Al.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, motion to nominate and approve continuing contract and other professional staff members as submitted by the superintendent.
This is an annual event related to all your staff who have made it beyond their probationary years.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's really just required by state statute.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
And I will not be participating in this with my...
Because you have a conflict, yeah. Okay, Al?
This is a mouthful. Motion to now make and approve the continuing contract and other professional staff members as submitted by the superintendent.
Moved by Al, seconded by Dan. Okay, discussion? Sarah?
I just have an organizational piece, sir. Shouldn't the positions listed be the positions that they will have for the next contract year, or that doesn't matter?
For the current position.
Okay.
People get adjusted. You know, as we have, for example, we have openings for next year. People will submit their applications, if they're interested or not. So, we'll get some movement that's based on their current assignment.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor?
Six and one abstention.
Six, I'm sorry. Six and one abstention. I'm sorry, kidding. Motion to approve funds from the Facility Capital Reserve... I'm sorry.
Just to invite Sue up, just as a kind of chewing this up. This fund was approved by the voters, as well as the board, as a fund to draw from if needed to on the Moheramit project.
So, this is the... After we ran all the numbers, that's what we need. There was $98,000 in there, and we only need $56,794.58 for the completion of that project. But we need your approval, so we can send it to the trustee of the trust fund, so it's official.
Okay. So, you have moved in... Kenny?
I move that we permit the release of $56,794.58 from the Facility Development Capital Reserve Fund in order to complete the payment of the Moheramit project. This has already been approved, March 11th, 2014, Warren Article IV, at the annual meeting session two, Roman numer two voting day.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by...
I'll be a much read.
Seconded by Denise.
Mm-hmm.
Denise, yeah?
So, the question is, so what you're saying, Sue, is there's actually more money than that left in the fund? So, what will happen to the remaining...
It stays there until we have a budget that you release it for.
Okay.
Or the voters release it for.
Good question.
Well, no, it doesn't have to go to the voters. I should clarify, actually, this wasn't typed up correctly. It's now an expendable trust fund.
Okay.
Right? We changed it to an expendable trust fund. It used to be a capital reserve fund, but we got the approval for that, and it's still an expendable trust fund that you can draw from again, if you need it.
So, the motion should change to read Facility Development...
Yeah, you know, after you said that, and I read that.
Expendable trust fund, rather than capital reserve fund.
Got it.
With that change...
Dan?
Do you got a question? Just so I'm clear, this is the Moheramit expansion project, correct? The cafeteria?
Yes.
Jim Azimov. Thank you.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep abstain? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion to approve the list of the Oyster River volunteer coaches. Kenny?
I move to approve the three volunteer Oyster River coaches for the spring sports season, Natalie Belinsky, Zachary Lewis, and Cooper Smith.
Okay, moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor? Okay, motion to approve policies. Maria?
Policy committee has not met since the last... Our last meeting, so they're coming here for second read, as presented before.
Okay, so we have two policies. Kenny?
I move for second read adoption policies, J.I.H. student searches in their property, as well as J.I.H.B. searches of student automobiles on school property. The R's here just for information.
Good job, Kenny.
And I will not comment on the Rs.
Yeah, okay.
We are trainable.
We are trainable.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
As I live and breathe.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, moved by Kenny. Is there a second? Seconded by Al? Oh, sorry. Discussion on these two? Yeah, Sarah?
There's a typo in J.I.H. in... Superintendent is spelled wrong in the la... I believe it's the last word of the policy.
Yeah.
And I... In the J.I.H.B., I had two things.
The car, okay.
Not the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, one, there refers to... My question was, could... Would it make sense to flip paragraphs two and three?
Where are you, Sarah?
In J.I.H.B., so page seven out of our eight of policy things, and the searches of student automobiles on school property. Would it make sense to switch paragraphs two and three?
Yes.
Because paragraph two talks about, in the event that an employee or school district has reason to believe that there are drugs, and then paragraph three talks about authorized personnel conducting a search. So, that was one thing. And then, second of all, in paragraph... The way it sits, in paragraph two, it discusses... It references authorized personnel, whereas in paragraph three, it references principal. And that makes me think, is the principal the only authorized personnel?
Say it again, Sarah. I was trying to...
So, in paragraph, as it sits, two, it references authorized personnel conducting that search.
Right.
And in paragraph three, it talks about only the principal doing the search. Oh, no, maybe it doesn't... In the event?
No, that's not the search. That's if someone has just...
Okay, that's filling out the form.
Or just reporting it, right.
But I'd still like... I'm still wondering about switching two and three.
Two and three makes sense to me.
Okay. You accept as the friendly amendment?
Yep.
The second, or accept that as a friend... Who's seconded?
Oh, I did, yeah.
Okay, okay, so switching paragraphs two and three. Okay, are there other changes, questions?
There's another typo in paragraph three. I'm not sure how critical that is.
What is it, Dan?
I get the intent, but it reads, "In the event the an employee..."
Oh, yeah.
Drop the word.
"...that an employee..."
That, yeah.
Yeah, "that an employee."
That, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, I don't want to get amendment happy here, but...
We'll take it as a friendly.
We'll take that as a friendly amendment. You don't want to appear illiterate.
Friendly grammatical flyer.
Okay. Okay, with those changes, which are the reversal of paragraphs two and three in policy J.I.H.B. and the correction that Dan pointed out, are there any other changes, or questions, or discussion? Okay, can we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor approving these two policies, please raise your hands. Seven in affirmative, student rep in the affirmative? Okay. So, school board up... Excuse me. Teaching day today. Did I talk too much in class? School board committee updates? One of the things that... Just a couple reminders to the... When committees meet the first time, okay? According to policy, the right to know law should be reviewed by the committees, so that if you are a student rep, or a student rep, a board rep to the committee, you know, I think it's your job to do that. And I don't think it has to be a huge, long thing, but I think just to review the, you know, the key policies, which we had presented to us last night in the workshop, so, yeah.
Is that true even for the committees that aren't board committees? That they... Like, I'm thinking Long Range Planning Committee, for example, which I'm on, so we should still do it anyway?
Yeah, which I know has done this a million times, but the advisory... My reading of the policy is that every committee needs to do this.
Okay.
And sometimes, like, you know, Dr. Morse and I went to the Sustainability Committee, and they just weren't quite as... My sense is they weren't quite as familiar with that because they were not... So, I think that's policy that we, you know, we've agreed to do that.
I would add, Tom, just in terms of that, too, that if you feel uncomfortable doing that presentation, I can go... Tom and I can go, whatever your needs are. So, if you feel comfortable doing it, maybe the same packet we use with sustainability, really, you know, it's an important thing to be doing, but if you feel like you'd rather have me do it, or Tom and me do it, we'd be glad to help.
The other thing is...
All in future.
That's fine, that's fine. If there are vacancies, and I know there are two on the 68 Hours of Hunger, and I may want to talk with you, Maria, about... Because I have some people have contacted me about filling those. I think there are two vacancies on that committee, so between now and the next meeting, if I can learn about those vacancies, and if people want to fill those, just let me know.
In terms of protocol related to that, when a vacancy occurs on a committee that the board appoints, it's really helpful if we get that nomination through the chair of that committee, because otherwise, we don't know, you know...
Chair assigned.
Yeah, whoever is elected chair of that committee. Because it's confusing on our end, because somebody will say, "Oh, you know, I really want to be on sustainability," and we don't know whether the sustainability wants them on sustainability. So, at one point, I think you lost your chair, Maria. Is that right?
I was like, "Yeah, 68 Hours of Hunger."
Of 868 Hours of Hunger, and we're getting these people who are interested, and I said to Wendy, "Well, send them back to the chair and make sure that that's okay," and there was no chair. So, we need some kind of official notification at our office before we can put them on the nomination to the board. So, it's really helpful if we get some kind of chain of command going.
Should there also be that kind of official notification of a resignation from a committee?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be part of what the committee reps should be telling us, you know, we have, like Tom just said, he knows we have two openings. That would come through the board member who...
I think they should send the resignation to you.
Some people have. So, there are two people from the 68 Hours of Hunger have done that. So, I know there are two vacancies.
And the other alternative to that, Al, is that the chair informs the chair of that committee... committee informs me and/or Tom that there's an opening. So just, there's a process that sometimes gets fumbled and bumbled, and you're not quite sure whether that's a nomination that should be coming in front of the board or not.
Okay. So there, I don't know if any committees have met since our last meeting, so it sounds like not.
We appointed everybody.
No.
Super quick meeting.
Yeah. Okay, public comment?
Just briefly, read the ad hoc committee on the athletic field. It, it's, it's hard to comment because I don't know the composition that's proposed, but I want to commend the prior committee for their enthusiasm, but at the same time, I think one of the problems of the committee might have been that there was a little too much agreement on that committee and not enough diversity. The website was frankly, some of, some of it was good. A lot of it was insulting to anyone with half a brain who would see the synthetic turf council propaganda, which was really, a lot of it grossly inaccurate. And I, again, I think it might have been just a problem that there wasn't enough criticism and diversity within the committee to present the argument cogently. So I, you know, again, I would hope that the new committee would be diverse. You don't have to have a unanimous vote every time something comes in, you should have some disagreement. You've got to involve the people like me who, you need that 4 percent that we, that we missed, the tree huggers, the tax cappers, and the crumb haters, and got to figure out a way to include a few more people, and I, I think the thing will work. But I don't think it will work if it's patterned exactly the same as the previous campaign. Again, I, Todd and all, they've been working on this for years, and I've been trying to support them as much as possible, and I know how passionate they are about it, but I can't say enough about the individuals and their passion. But again, I just hope there's a little more diversity on the new committee.
Thank you.
David Taylor from Durham, listening to your conversation about the Communications Committee really got my antenna up, really concerned about that committee, the way you seemed like you operate. It's really important that the board as a whole is the one who gives direction to the superintendent, that there's not a subcommittee, a small group that effectively directs the superintendent on what he's doing, or whatever the action is. This district has a history for many years of rogue committees that go off and do things, and it sounds like that is happening again. We really need to be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just speak once as a public citizen. I just, I just wanted to clarify something from what, what was just said. The committee that was referred to that was responsible for the promotion of the Athletic Fields Project was not a board committee in any way, shape, or form. It was unabashedly a group of people who wanted the project to pass. The, the website was clearly billed as for the purpose of promoting this, this project. So there was, although I agree with Dr. Barth that more objectivity in the process is needed, but I just don't want to confuse anybody into thinking that was a committee that the board brought forward. That was a group of people who wanted this to pass, who worked very hard to make it pass, and we're going to learn from it, and we're going to move forward, but just, I don't want to confuse the two issues.
Okay. Closing actions, so we have a meeting on the 15th?
Maria?
Yeah?
I would make a motion that at the next meeting, we have a presentation or clarification on the concerns that I've seen on the Oyster River Cross School about not enough copies or not having enough money for copies of How to Kill, How to Kill a Mockingbird.
I would, I don't normally speak to motions, but because Sarah Farwell made me aware of
this particular issue, there's a whole bunch of, try not to editorialize, there's a bunch of Facebook communications around materials that we don't have that have been associated with other endeavors of the school board. When I said to Sarah Farwell, I would say to Maria, and I'll say to this camera, if Todd Allen is asked to get extra copies to Kill a Mockingbird or any other textbook in this high school, he has the resources to do it. So as a board member, if you're hearing that, please direct that person to the appropriate administrator, in this case, Todd, and he will tell them directly that if he has a PO for 30 copies of a Kill a Mockingbird or any other material, they would be audited post-with. So I don't think it has to be an agenda item. I think we have plenty of resources, a high school principal supports his teachers, he gets requests, he purchases them.
This is middle school.
Well, you mean the same.
Not what I've seen.
So, you know, I just encourage you guys to, when you get this stuff, to redirect people to the appropriate administrator, whether it's middle school, high school, elementary, because we have plenty of resources in this district to get materials for teachers.
I'm not responding to Facebook posts.
Well, whatever the vehicle is, you're hearing it through.
That's, what you're asking us to do is to really delve into the superintendent's job, which is what we're not supposed to do for policy, so...
She made a, she made a motion, is there a second?
Can I hear the motion again? I didn't, it was...
To get a report on the situation of How to Kill a Mockingbird, which seems to be upsetting a lot of people.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? There's no second, so that motion does not go forward, which doesn't preclude you from, if you want to give us information on it.
I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, maybe in your superintendent's report. Maria?
Then my other question is, will we have it on the agenda soon to discuss the, the budget motion that I made before to explore Dean Rupein's suggestion of having it presented in the form of tax commitment rather than percentage?
My, my sense is that we should consider that, the difficulty with that motion, that happened was we had already made our budget goals. I think, I think when we form our budget goals, we should talk with Sue about just what's the best way to, we want to...
The motion was made and voted in favor of that, so...
Well, I mean, I can, all I can say is that my intent is to look at all different ways that we could frame the budget goals as they come forward. That, that motion was well into the time where our budget goal had already been formed.
That's why I waited until after the budget is done, so that we understand it before...
Yeah, but it seems to me that the appropriate, the appropriate time for that is as we're framing our budget goals, to determine what's the, the best way to, to frame that, what, what information we have, and when we get certain information so that we can frame their budget goals in, in the best way. So I'm totally open to...
Can I make a suggestion on that, Tom? Because that did, that was a motion that was approved by the board. And when Sue and I are working on building a budget, that, that particular concept came through late in the process, I think it would be really, really interesting to take the current approved budget, because we're not in the middle of budget season, and translate it into what we perceive Dean's concept is, and then you could have a discussion of whether it's clearer or not clearer. Because my sense is, doing that, we're going to find out, it's very confusing, because people aren't used to it, for one thing, but I think the easiest thing to do is for Sue to sit with Dean and say, "Okay, here's the budget we just approved, what would it look like it with your con, concept?" And we'll look at it, because to try to do it while we're building budgets and saying, but to do it after, right now, is a good time to do it. So Sue would get together with Dean and see what it would look like, and bring it back to you guys, and see what you think of it. Because I still don't quite understand what Dean is proposing, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
At my recollection, and maybe I misunderstood what we were approving, it was just to get more information about it, we didn't, I certainly wasn't voting to have it be presented a particular way. I was, I think the proposal was, which, do you want to have a presentation about it? Sure, sure, let's have a presentation about it, so I'm not agreeing, yeah.
Right, and I think this satisfies that, that, and also Maria's thought that we kind of come back to it, we did vote on it, we come back to it, I think we apply it to the budget that was just passed, and then we can see whether we want to go forward in the proposed budget, to use that as a vehicle, because you'll have something concrete to look at and say, "I get this, I don't get this." Okay?
Okay. Okay, I think we've done everything. Motion to adjourn?
Al, make a motion.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Denise. Okay, discussion? No, no. All those in favor? Seven in favor, student rep in favor, we're done.